Thanks for coming tonight. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Number two is the adoption of the agenda and amendments, and it's a motion to adopt the agenda. And Counselor Bolt, you have the motion.
All right, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Smith. Be it resolved the council town of Perth adopt the agenda for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five council meeting as presented.
Discussion on the motions. Counselor Bird.
Yes, through the chair, if I may, I am giving. There be amendment to the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
It would be be it resolved that the council of town of Perth amend the agenda for the eighteenth of March, twenty 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 five council meeting. Remove agenda item twelve point three tariff relief measure.
Do you have a second here for your motion?
I'll second that motion.
Counselor Bolt. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Waterfield.
Through the chair, may I ask why?
Um, there are a number of reasons. Principally that this has not come up through Cal. Um, it is not, and it, uh, I don't feel, I don't feel or think that it is a, an emergency situation. There are a number of reasons. I can expand further if you wish.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Smith. Okay, thanks. And Counselor Bolt.
Yeah, I'd just like to add same comment in the sense that it didn't come up through Cal. Secondly, I think this is a moving target at this time. We don't know what, uh, what's going to happen with the President of the United States from almost from minute to minute, day to day, hour to hour. And quite frankly, there's already been government, uh, well, a proposal for government assistance for business. And I think that, uh, under the financial strain that we're under as a council, um, I, I just don't think, uh, it, it warrants doing anything at this time until this thing unfolds a little further.
Okay, Counselor McCray, go ahead.
Um, through your chair, also the BIA, um, had a, an emergency meeting, um, just last week. Um, and they delivered on an elbows up campaign. And my understanding is later on, they're going to be presenting a delegation to council. So I would think that, that at that time, that might be a more appropriate time. Because I think that they would like to work collaboratively with their town along with other, uh, organizations, possibly the chamber, possibly tourism, possibly our communications department.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion? Carrie Ashley, and you have a second motion now. Counselor Bird.
Thank you, Chair. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth adopt the agenda for the eighteenth of March, twenty twenty five council meeting as amended. Remove agenda item twelve point three tariff relief measure.
And I'll need a second here for that. Counselor Bolt. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion. Carrie Ashley. Thank you. Land acknowledgement and respect for the laws that the land which will govern is a traditional home of various indigenous peoples. As a result of this reconciliation, we all live in respect on this land and living place and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. And before disclosure, the community interest and continuity of interest and general nature thereof, if anyone has one, please let us know when or now or sometime during the meeting. Adoption of the minutes, Counselor McCray.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Gary Waterfield. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth adopt the minutes of February the eighteenth, twenty twenty five at the regular council meeting.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion. Carrie Ashley, thank you. We have no delegations, and I have one presentation tonight. It's the twenty twenty four Living Health Architectural Conservation Award Program recipients. First one is Ron Shaw, and the second is Allen Stafford Wilson, and I'll just read a couple of prepared notes if you don't mind. The Living Health Architectural Conservation Award Program. These awards award anyone to recognize, promote, and encourage excellence in elders conservation at town of Perth. The award categories consist of weddings, landscape, education, and elders cross people. They show two awards, both under education. The first involves two education, Ron Shaw. Spending the given is nothing but the website of the Perth and Wurkia Historical Society and open the doors to. We'll throw out a northern articles on one of every aspect of our community's past. Anyone who's familiar with the research and study of Ron Shaw. For the teachings and research of the center of his own style. The results of long throw home speaks on the stairs. Our presence in Spanish is making influence on vision, first persons of Perth, and we must have. Ron's after the future hasn't spoken about local events and continues to research and write about Perth. Ron's unable to make it tonight, but we'll make sure we get his certificate to him. The second recipient is Allen Stafford Wilson in education. With better than his book, in the portion that have come across Allen's post and her like forest tales and stories from our community. She's a respected geologist and researcher, and she has books written on the stars of her just birth to life. And she continues to post all these daily, where far as nothing most of the files are drifting of the community. But this presents future. And friends who are wonderful and continue to commit to tell the stories, and they are fantastic. Like I've lived here my whole life, but I look forward to them all the time. They're just great. Even though I've lived here forever, I learn something every time I read something from you. It's very nice what you do for us. So if you would come forward, I mean, I'd give you a certificate and have a picture taken with you, and Mayor Brown, if you would come forward.
And did you just like, there's, there's items for that rewards, this is the right?
Uh, yeah, we will launch this.
Here, here.
Discussion on the consent agenda and the motion, Counselor Smith.
Moved by myself that the following bylaws and motions listed below in the consent agenda be passed and numbered accordingly.
Does anyone have anything from the consent agenda they'd like to pull? No? Have you seen that? All in favor? Carrie Ashley. Um, Stafford Forts, want to bylaws, report number twenty twenty five council three point one. And I'm not sure, Counselor Waterfield, you have the motion?
It's gone.
It's hiring the building inspector.
Oh, right.
Twelve point one.
Be resolved that the council of the town of Perth, one, pass bylaw number five two zero two. To appoint Andrew Willows as a building inspector to ensure continuity of customer service within the department. And two, authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement to the satisfaction of the CAO with Andrew Willows. For the provision of building inspection plans, examination services on an as needed basis as presented in report twenty twenty five council three point one.
That was seconded by Counselor McCray. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion? Carrie Ashley. Report, Council three point two revisions to the twenty twenty five water and sewer charges. Counselor Bird.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the, oh, sorry, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Smith. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth pass bylaw number four zero two nine dash seven. Being a bylaw to amend by law number four zero two nine dash six, Schedule A. To revise the fixed fee associated with the three inch and four inch dial size that were incorrectly stated in four zero two nine dash six by law. As presented in report twenty twenty five council dash two point one.
Discussion on the motion, Counselor Bolt.
I read the report, but I'm just curious, perhaps the CAO can answer this. I don't think Brad is here. Or, I'm sorry, my apologies, maybe you can answer it for me. Um, so the three and four inch dial size. Where, how often is, is that used in the community? And how many, how many, uh, homes or businesses does this affect?
So there's no homes affected. It's just the large industrial institutions, and I believe it's about nine.
Okay, so in effect, it's, it's, it's a rollback, not a roll forward, which is, it's a good news story.
Yes, they haven't actually been charged the higher rate. We, we haven't done that.
Okay.
Yeah, so yes, it's just been corrected and yeah, so there'd be no impact.
Okay, so the horse didn't get over the barn, so we're okay.
Exactly.
All right, perfect.
Any other questions about the motion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie Ashley. Many council, many council, I don't have on the report. It was a full night meeting, but Mayor Brown, do you have any comments from the last council meeting at Leonard County?
Um, the only thing I wanted to mention was that, um, there's funding available for affordable housing and so on. But there's, there's several possible projects, so the county is going to have a, an analysis done as to where each of these. Projects is in the process, so they will be able to tell for sure which are shovel ready because. Um, in most cases, if not all, uh, giving the money depends on whether the project, uh, is shovel ready. That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay, perfect. Um, hospital board minutes, Mayor Brown.
Yes, um, there were. Uh, a couple of reports that were in the question. One is, uh, statistics about made, uh, medically assisted death. Um, you know, that they are increasing, and the hospital has been awarded a fairly substantial amount of money by the province, but. Uh, our deficit still continues to be sizable.
Okay, any questions for Mayor Brown? Next one is the climate change advisory panel, and Counselor Smith, you have any comments, because Mayor Brown, you missed that meeting.
I have, uh, no comments. I was sick during.
Okay, thank you. Leonard County, we're going to schedule our first official meeting in April. Um, we're waiting for the two new community members to, uh, finalize all of the training you have to finalize in order to be sworn in as a board member. We're hoping that happens by the end of the month. They've both been notified. And if so, this will be the first meeting of the new board, which has, we've been sort of waiting probably about a year now to. Get up and running. We've got a transition board, but we haven't been able to do much work, so I'm looking forward to that one. With advisory, Counselor Smith.
Uh, that was canceled.
Okay.
There is just one small thing. There's that the annual, um. Heritage newsletter that goes out is being finalized, and that goes out to the people, residents, and businesses in the area.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Bird on that one?
I just asked him to repeat that in his mic.
Sorry about that. Uh, no, I was just mentioning that the heritage, annual heritage newsletter is nearly finalized and will be going out.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I did find out, uh, the meeting was very short. There was a review of the terms of reference because we seemed to be swaying off course. And second of all, there was a survey that has been sent out, uh, to the community on, uh, an opportunity for them to give their ideas for the recreational attractions that would be. Uh, in this park, so we wait till that's returned.
Any questions for Counselor McCray? Nope. Straighten, Counselor Bolt.
Uh, that group, um, hasn't met. We won't meet, we won't meet until April the tenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Uh, yes. So, uh, the BIA has been very busy. Um, at our meeting in February the twenty sixth, we had an orientation that was given by Amanda Noel and Sheldon Giff. And, uh, actually, our interim, uh, mayor, Ed McPherson, was introduced at that meeting. And, uh, basically, we went over a number of bylaws that needed to be, uh, brought up to date in our terms of reference. Uh, in relationship to the variety of different committees, um, that, um, operate under the BIA. Then on March thirteenth, we had an emergency meeting, and that was over concerns of increasing tariffs. And concerns for a stunting growth of business expand, or business expansions and empty storefronts. And they're going to be delivering on a elbows up campaign where they want to look, um, where they will be reaching out. Uh, um, to the town and, uh, would, uh, also, um, be putting together some type of a presentation that they would. Uh, give to, uh, in the form of a delegation to our town council. So they're looking at short term solutions, kind of low hanging fruit, and more long term project strategic initiatives. So that's coming up. And then just on the other committee I sit on that has to do with promotion, there's a lot of different things coming up. Uh, there's a fundraiser, a lot of fun. It's called the Capital Burlesque. It's on April the twelfth, and it's in the store. Tickets are in the store now for that. And, uh, the other one is, uh, uh, Perth Alishous, and, uh, it's, uh, uh, another type of fundraiser, a gathering, uh, sorry, it's not a fundraiser. It's to promote business. Here in Perth, um, especially those involved in the culinary industry and restaurant industry. Um, so it's an event which, which features three courses, menus at participating local restaurants between March the twenty fourth and April the sixth, twenty twenty five. And, um, interesting enough, we got this wonderful ad. In Edible Ottawa.
Hmm.
So, um, that was, uh, I thought that was a very positive thing for them.
Okay, questions for Counselor McCray on the BIA report? Well, Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so the Perth and District Chamber of Commerce is having their annual general meeting. That's coming up very shortly. Uh, that's on March the twenty sixth between eleven thirty and one thirty, and that is at the Locks. And there's going to be a very interesting speaker, Pascal Chan, who's the Vice President of Strategic Policy and Supply Chain, the Canadian Chambers of Commerce. So he'll be, uh, very, very timely too, as well to what, uh, our communities are going through. And then the Festival of Maples is on April the twenty sixth, um, twenty twenty five, uh, Saturday from nine to four. Um, their membership, they have a hundred and sixty two members have renewed so far, and we're only into March, and they have a lot more. Uh, to, uh, continue to renew their membership. And they had a very successful all candidates meeting, approximately two hundred people attended, and, um, all the candidates were there, so I thought that was, uh, a good show. That's it.
Any questions for Counselor McCray on that report? All candidates, the library board, Counselor Waterfield.
Uh, yes, Chair, uh, I attended the library board meeting just yesterday. The highlight of that was the auditor presented her re-annual report and, uh, the finances of the library are in good shape.
Any questions for Counselor Waterfield? Okay, Conservation Authority.
On February twentieth, I attended a Rito Valley Conservation Authority executive meeting. On February twenty seventh, I chaired a board meeting. Uh, we passed our twenty twenty five budget. We passed a new surveillance policy. We updated our administrative bylaw, and I'm in constant contact with the executive director on various issues.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Waterfield on that report? Counselor Bird.
If I may, through the chair, it's, it's not necessarily about the report. It's just, um, and we may have discussed this in the past. Part of the official plan, we were, there was some talk about how, um, there have been moves in other townships to. Make wetlands, uh, an asset, an asset of the town. I know that the conservation authorities have been limited in what they can say about development, but could. The RBCA act as an advisor to us in relation, if we were to consider that kind of bylaw or. Developing a natural assets.
Through the chair, I certainly would encourage that if the town wishes to ask that, that the town certainly can. I don't know the specific answer, but certainly if there's an interest there, I would encourage that there be an official, um, ask for that. Thank you.
Okay, um. Leonard County Traffic Advisory Working Group, Counselor Waterfield.
Uh, the committee met on February the nineteenth. Uh, we reviewed the final list of, uh, community safety zones and school zones throughout the county. Uh, we reviewed the educational traffic counting measures for McDonald's Corners, Middleville, and Clayton. And we are getting to the final stage of selecting a vendor for automated speed enforcement, uh, in the near future.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Waterfield? Well, Counselor Bird, you have the motion to receive the reports.
Thank you, through the chair. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Smith. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth receive the council committee, local boards, and external board reports minutes as presented.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion? Carrie Ashley. So, um, excuse me, Counselor Bird.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I just had a couple of things that I, I, I wanted to maybe just bring to the floor for maybe. Future analysis or what have you. Uh, the first one is, um, we've had a number of, of requests over the years. From concerned citizens about speed limits in our town, and we've done, uh, studies and, and it's been proven a few times, uh, with those studies that, that there, there isn't a lot of, of speeding in the town that we know of. Although I, for one, continue to see people that I know are speeding. I don't need a machine to tell me how fast they're going. I, I just wonder out loud with fellow counselors here, uh, we hear all the time about how much money the city of Ottawa makes with, with cameras that are mounted on certain poles in, in busy areas. Um, and to catch people that are speeding, and, and they make quite a bit of revenue from that. So, again, this is just wondering out loud. Uh, I don't know if it's ever been discussed before. I don't know whether it's feasible because we're such a small town, but I wonder out loud if it's something we could perhaps look into to see what would the cost be? To put in, uh, speed cameras, uh, how much commitment would it take in manpower to process it or monitor it? Uh, and, uh, and so on. So I, I throw that open.
What I do is ask you, under our procedure, if you send a note off to the clerk, or a correction, and ask if you're in a Jennifer account meeting.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Did you guys want to talk about it, or I just?
I just had a, if you don't mind, through the chair, uh, the last time I looked into it, uh, which is a number of years ago now, the, the threshold for a number of. Tickets that had to be issued or the volume of traffic had to be pretty high just to break even, uh, but I think that's one of the reasons that the county is looking at. A group, uh, purchasing program or administrative program for that, which Counselor Waterfield mentioned earlier.
Uh, through, through the chair, I could make a comment for that.
Well, I might as well come with this question.
Okay, uh, as mentioned in my report from the, uh, traffic advisory working group for the county. We have been meeting with a number of vendors that have those automatic speed cameras, and it does require a minimum threshold to make it financially feasible.
Okay.
We will be selecting a vendor for county roads within the near future. Um, whether that could be, uh, sort of aligned with any particular, uh, municipality within the county, if, if a municipality wanted any of their roads included. That's, that's open to a question, but, but for, uh, a town to do it themselves, it's not financially feasible.
May I comment?
Sure.
Well, thank you for that. And actually, I was going to ask you when you presented your report, but I, I was thinking of town only, and you're more of a global, uh, concern. But perhaps that is something that, that if we were included and perhaps maybe some other communities, you know, with, with both purchasing and so on. It's just something that we're always looking for ways to make extra income in this town, and we're always complaining, many of us are complaining about speed. So it was just a thought, and I, it would be great if you could come back with, uh, some information on that at a future meeting.
Okay, and one more comment or?
Yes, well, I thought I'd ask you, Deputy Mayor, you sent out a, an email today, uh, responding to, uh, an article in the newspaper. Uh, about, uh, the thirst responders, miss responders rather, uh, issue. And I just wondered if you wanted to make a comment on that, because I know you're going to get some more comments on that.
It's part of the grant. It's not sanctioned by the town, so there's not the kind of type of private people are putting it on. It's not part of the town of Perth at all.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown, you had a question?
Yeah, a comment, uh, in regard to the topic of speeding is, is not exactly the same thing. But a number of years ago, we looked at the, um, amount that was owed in unpaid traffic tickets. And it's basically only a few people, but it's, it's a substantial amount of money. So maybe at some point, we could bring that back for discussion again.
Okay, Counselor McCray, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I did, uh, Chair, if I may. Um, at the last meeting, we, we talked, uh, we had a presentation given by, uh, Kathy McNally. I thought a, a very thorough, uh, presentation on communication. And, um, I thought, uh, there was an article in the paper, and I, I thought it was very unfair, some of the comments that were made, that we made, this council made a motion. Um, that, um, you know, uh, we were going to try to promote, uh, stores, if they could at all, to purchase Canadian products and, uh, put flags. Uh, up and promote Canada and that kind of thing. Anyway, they, the article made mention that, um, in twenty twenty four, our, um. Administration and specially communications, um, used a number of American sources for social media. And I think it's really important to realize that those were priced, that those from, were from twenty twenty four. Um, just as, uh, uh, Counselor Bolt has, uh, referred to, it's like a, a ticking bomb. Every day is changing in terms of the tariffs. We don't know what, what's going to be thrown at us next. But the other thing is, if you look carefully in terms of social media and Canadian social media, I believe there's very little Canadian social media platforms. The only one I was able to find, um, and I think I've got it here, was iLily out of Nova Scotia. The, the only platform I know that's in Canada and relatively new, so they don't get a lot of traffic. So I'm not sure it would be very effective for us to cut off all the social media platforms that we use from the states in order to promote industry and business in our community. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Counselor McCray. Counselor Smith.
I wanted to, uh, comment on the thirst responders race. Um, not only is it not, uh, sponsored by the town, it is not sponsored by Bridgemasters Brewery. Um, I spoke to them, and, um, uh, it is being, uh, held, uh, organized by a group of individuals who are pretty well known in Perth. I don't know if I should say the group, um, but it's a well-known group of people, uh, that are doing it. Uh, Bridgemasters is simply supplying the beer and, um, having a band. Bridgemasters is simply supplying the beer and having a band at night.
So just for the media, because you're probably going to ask the question, we had, we had an email from a resident wondering why the town is sponsoring or hosting alcohol pension rates, and we're not. So that's basically what it was. And any questions for me? Is there anybody online other than Brian? No, okay, thank you. Next one, this Tuesday, the twenty second at five thirty three. There's no close sessions, no rights report, confirmation proceeding by law is Counselor Waterfield has a motion.
Be resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth passed bylaw number five two zero three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Town of Perth at its meeting held March eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion? Karen Ashley. Motion for adjournment, Counselor McCray.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Jim Bolt. Be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Perth adjourn our meeting of March the eighteenth, twenty twenty five, council meeting at five fifty eight P M.
All in favor? We're adjourned, thank you.